Welcome, everybody, to the zoning board meeting. It's September 27, 2022. My name is Marty Aikens. I'm the chairman, vice chairman. Mr. Ray Dal, board members at the end, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Chin, Mr. Hemel, Art Clark, Kathleen, known to my right, the ex-Clark, Ms. Murphy, who's still with us, and Rob will be here calling for the Inspection Services Division. If you have a cellphone or a pager, please put it on quiet or vibrate so you don't interrupt the meeting. If you want to speak, please step outside. If anyone's going to testify here tonight, please stand and raise your right hand. Nope. If you're going to testify, please take an oath. Mr. Chin?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter before your...
Yes.
Thank you.
We have some movement tonight on the agenda. We'll go through them. ZBA 2117, 15 Jewett Street. That's going to be moved to 1025. Have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 21-17, Lone Dome, for a variance finding to construct a single-family home on the lot using flow-through foundation and driveway pavers on the premise number 15 Jewett Street. I make a motion to move that case to 1025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. ZBA 21101, 201 Copeland Street. We're looking for December 13th. I'm the attorney.
Mr. Chairman, case number ZBA 21101, CPLD Street LLC, for a variance to construct a three-story, eight-unit multifamily structure with incorporated parking on the premise number 201 Copeland Street Quincy. I make a motion to move that to 1213.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. ZBA 20260, 91 Asabet. We're looking for 1025.
Brian Travis for a variance to... Oh, case ZBA 20260, Brian Travis for a variance to add on a 10-foot addition on the driveway side of the home on the premise number 91 Asabet Road Quincy. I make a motion to move that to 1025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Opposed? So moved. Case number ZBA 20272. This is Patrick Foley's case. The lawyer just ended up in surgery Sunday. He just got out of hospital maybe an hour ago, so he has to move him. 5355 Home Street.
Mr. Chairman, ZBA 20272, Patrick Foley Esquire, for a variance finding to convert the existing two-family home to a three-family home on the premise number 53-55 Home Street Quincy. I make a motion to move that to 1025.
Second.
On the motion, CNN all in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? So moved. Back to the... Old business, ZBA 2223, James Burke, for special permit floodplain variance to subdivide the lot into two lots, construct a single-family home on the lot number 25 Shannon Street. Is the applicant or representative here? Please step forward, name and address for the record, please.
My name is Cameron Campbell. I'm with DeSalle Berg Soler, engineers for the project. And my address is 101 Fairbanks Ave. in Taunton, Mass. So, the project site is at 25 Shannon Street, down the neck in Quincy. It is an existing 10,000-square-foot lot that is historically a 5,000-square-foot lot. It was combined sometime in the 1940s under Colin ownership. And it was originally split right down the middle. As it is today, it's now a single 10,000-square-foot lot. It currently is the last double lot on this portion of Shannon Street. The surrounding lots are all either... The majority of the surrounding lots are either 5,000 square feet or smaller, which is significantly smaller than the 7,650 square feet minimum for residence A zoning. As the lot sits today, there's an existing, just over 1,000-square-foot, single-family dwelling with a two-car driveway and a 100-square-foot shed. And we are proposing to subdivide this lot. Keep the existing dwelling and construct a 774-square-foot, single-family dwelling. The lot will be split slightly off-center. It'll have 52 feet of frontage on the left, 48 feet of frontage on the right. It'll be a 5,200-square-foot lot on the left and 4,800-square-foot lot on the right. It'll be lot 71 and lot 72. The lot on the left will remain... The setbacks in the front will remain as-is, and the setback on the left side will remain as-is. It'll have like 12.9...
You keep saying left and right. You mean facing the house right and left. Going backwards, right?
This side, yeah. So, left this way.
Facing house, so from a street view, it's the right side?
Yeah.
From the street view, it's the right side.
The lot 71.
Okay.
The existing house. It'll be 12.9 off the front, 37... Or 17.7 off the left... The westerly side, so right if you're facing the street. And it'll be 3.4 feet off the eastern side, or the left if you're facing the street. And it'll have a rear setback of 44.8. And the new structure will meet all the zoning setbacks. It'll have 25.5 off the front, it'll be 13.3 on both sides, and it'll be 26.5 off the rear to the depth. We are proposing to build two small infiltration structures to collect the existing roof runoff. The new structure will be built... Game of Standard with flow-through construction because it's in a floodplain district. And there's going to be a wall around the westerly side that wraps around the back to catch up to the grade as it cuts into the slope slightly. Because there's a large slope that comes from the rear of butter that slopes down from elevation 24, and then the street's at elevation 15. So, the hardship we're going for is if we were to tear down this existing lot, and tear down this existing building, and build a conforming house, we would have to do a significant amount of disturbance and disturb the existing floodplain area as is today and cause the neighbors more grief with the area that's been known for having significant flooding. With... And they've come out with issues, and they've had issues, and we've been in discussion with them. And we've worked with them. We've had a neighborhood meeting with them to discuss their issues. And we've come up with a plan with what they've agreed with, and they've had... We've solved the issues to the best of their ability, of our ability with what... And I can go over what we've come up with to help them.
Why don't you?
So, the neighbor in the back, he has an existing rear roti wall, and his slopes are running away. The applicant is proposing to reconstruct that wall with a...
Whose walls is it?
It's the rear neighbors.
It's their wall?
Yeah. This is all one lot.
No, I know. I just didn't know who's pouring the wall.
And then, as the lot sits today, this slope, this house next door is a low point, so all the rain runoff kind of runs off the slope and floods out this person's backyard. And we're proposing to put in a rain garden, which is essentially a depressed landscape strip, so it'll catch this runoff before it hits this person's backyard to alleviate some of the issue with the rain going into their backyard and flooding out their backyard.
All right, go ahead.
We're looking for a special permit to build in floodplain along with the variance to per lot size, for both lots, the frontage on both lots, and the setback on the existing building, the side setback, the... And the height, the story requirement on the existing... On the proposed lot, due to the fact that it's in floodplain, you have to build it up high to get it out of the floodplain. And I can answer any questions if you guys have any.
You say you have a filtration system there for the new house?
Yes.
Are you going to add any filtration system on the existing house that's there, except for that buffer?
No.
How deep is that?
The buffer? It goes two feet down. We dig out two feet, replace it with like a infiltrating soil, a planting soil, that's more pervious than what's there. So, when the water hits it, and you have a six-inch depression, so it ponds up six inches, and then it allows the water to sink, to infiltrate into the ground greater.
So, that house backyard gets flooded, yet there's only six inches? That's going to make that flood that whole backyard?
That's six inches plus two feet of soil underneath that's absorbing it.
And what are you doing with the patio that's on that house existing? Is that being taken out?
The one off the side?
Yeah.
That's being taken out and replaced with a upgrade patio.
And how big's the infiltration on that house that you put in?
So, the... There's two small... They're three and a half feet, three feet around by three feet deep. Two of them here, one here, and they're sized to hold an inch of runoff coming off the roof, which is typical standard roof collection.
So, nothing extra for that runoff in that new lot is being put in? That's just going to take care of the water from the new house runoff from the roof, correct?
That's... Yeah, that's taken from the roof, yeah.
Any questions? Any questions?
No questions.
Nope.
Does the existing house have water?
According to the...
But the neighbor next door on the...
When it floods, yeah. I mean, when it's in a floodplain, so...
No, I know, but... The store gets water, but he doesn't.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the house next door is in the lowest point you can write, so everything flows in that direction.
Okay, thank you.
And the size of the house is 21 by 36?
It is...
And the height?
Four square feet, and it's three stories. The width of 42 by... 21 and a half by 36, and the depth, it has a 12 by 14 deck off the back.
All right. Anyone else?
Yeah.
You can have a seat, sir. Is there anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? All our part of the hearing closed. Correspondents? I have a letter here from council.
Council Liang. Dear Chairman Aikens, first and foremost, I regret that due to my prior work commitment, I'm not able to attend. In your consideration of this application, I wanted to highlight the issues that have been brought to my attention in the area. I have and continue to hear from several area residents who have expressed concerns on the project's potential impact on neighborhood flooding and the wetlands on Parkhurst Street. I ask that the body fully weigh these issues before approving this project. Any negative impact would most... Would be most unwelcome in the area. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All our part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Please step forward and ask your questions and state your name and address for record, please. Wait a minute, you have to get on record, man. That's okay. Wrong new here.
Holly King, 23 Shannon Street.
Okay.
On the house next door. I just want to make sure, so originally, there was a small little rain garden. I was told that it was now going to run the whole length of the house. Is that accurate?
Uh, where are you talking about?
This. So, originally, you said it was supposed to be this small, and that you extended it to go the whole length of the yard?
Yeah, that's where the... It's on this whole hatch area.
Okay, all right, so it's not just this area?
Yeah, this whole area will be all mulched out, yeah.
Okay. And for the record, like, I have not received any water in my house in the 30 years I've been here. It's just been the yard. So, if I do get water, it would be from this additional plant. There'd be no way around, all of a sudden, if I get water inside, that it would not be from this house being built.
Do you ever stop pumping your house?
I do not.
You do not? Oh.
I haven't needed one up until...
I got one, and I live in the top of Great Hill. Check it out.
Yeah.
There's a stream that goes right by me.
So, there is... We do have a dry well in the backyard. It works most of the time.
Yeah.
Like, we do, like I said, we do flood...
Does anyone clean that out, or have any maintenance on it? Okay.
Of course.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed or undecided, name and address for record?
Hi, my name is David McKesey, and I'm a rapid circle. I bought the property in the rare.
Okay.
We've had meetings with the... And my main concern was the erosion of the top of the hill, the top of the slope at the back. It's already been having some erosion problems, and we've...
That whole wall?
Yes. We spoke to the applicant. He's going to install another retaining wall at the top, stone one, that's going to help retain that. My main concern was that any stress would be put on my foundation of my home if the base of that was removed. So, there's going to be one at the base, and there's going to be one at the top, so...
So, you're saying he's rebuilding the whole wall?
Going to rebuild the whole wall at the top, because he needs to, because it's taken away from the bottom, and it's also going kind of eroding at the top, so it's going to be rebuilt. It was real rotis before, so I need a better structure to improve it.
Are you happy with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, we came to agreement on it, and as a dad, I can't object now. As long as he follows through with what was agreed upon, then I wouldn't have a problem with it.
It's on the record.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And put that in there, and he's going to be building the wall.
Rear wall, right?
Yeah, the rear wall, when it's property. Is there anyone else closed or undecided? Counselor.
I think we should make Counselor McCarthy a member of the ZBA, CSO, Maricopa.
Yeah, yeah.
Good evening, Dave McCarthy, 48, Whitney Road, Ward, One Counselor. Nice and quiet up here tonight. No, I'm in support of the project. I'm glad, and the neighbors, I wish a lot of neighbors did. A lot of this was done on their own. They met, worked it out with the applicant in regards to Mr. McKesey's wall, which we discussed. I spoke to Dave when this first started about how to help him out, getting the support as Rapid Circle sits above Shannon, and that end of Shannon always had water regardless if there was six houses, seven houses, eight houses, he gets water. So, I'm glad that the applicant made some adjustments to help out the neighborhood, and I think he'll have a nice little house there in the corner, and it should work out well for everybody, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Is there anyone else? All our part of the hearing closed. I got a few questions on that old house, where you put in that French drain or whatever flower bed you're calling it, I don't know what you're calling it, but why can't you put something that retains more water than that on that side? That can retain more water and slowly drain it out, like a leach field or something?
I mean, typically, you don't do anything too close to the foundation with a big... A big system. You don't want to put it too close to the foundation because you're just going to...
But it's running down the backyard, so why can't it go in the backyard there, where it runs through?
Where it runs through? Oh, it's up higher, so you're going to have to... There's not much room to push it up. You're going to go uphill to around...
But the water's coming down here.
So, you mean, catch it off the slope?
Yeah. Why can't you catch that all coming in that corner, going down in the corner house where she lives at, and catch it before it even gets there? Why can't you put something in there in the back, right behind the house, where it all comes down? It all comes down that mound, just like that. Yeah.
Couldn't it catch it in a catch basin type?
Something to grab, how many gallons you could put in there, and slowly, it would slowly leach into the ground. I mean, it's a big giant funnel back there that's just waiting to...
I mean, we designed it to catch along the edge. I mean, if you put it all into the ground, it's going to... Either way, either way, it's going to overburden at some point, no matter how much...
Yeah, if you get five days of rain, I get that.
Catch so much. And then, the biggest... The biggest issue with this location is the land surface coastal zone flowage, which is the ocean coming in.
They fixed all that, though. I mean, you've still got the marsh down there, I know, but... And it does bring it up, but it's really, really, that marsh gets that high. It really don't get that high anymore down there. It backflows in them all.
So, you...
Not that it can't come down, Dave, you have, and fill up that. It does, it really does. I know, I know exactly. I've lived there my whole life, I know what it's like. But something... Something can... There's got to be something a little better, to me, that scares me with a two-foot little section.
Well, it's four... It's four feet wide, two foot deep.
Oh, it's four feet wide?
Yeah, four feet wide, it's two foot deep.
Oh, 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 oh. I thought you said it's two feet. You know, you can almost run over that.
Yeah, no, it's two feet deep.
It's flowing? Oh, okay, all right.
It's a six-inch depression, four feet wide, two feet deep. They'll cut two feet of the natural soil up and put it in with the infiltrators.
Right, right. All right. And that's going the whole length?
The whole length, yeah.
So, it's not just that little black that I can see from here?
No, this is just the... That's the depression?
Yeah.
Because you'll... You have to catch...
Right, you have to catch a water, right?
Right.
Okay.
It'll be like... It'll look like a landscaping strip, the whole length.
All right, all right. And I'm just wondering if there's any way to push that house over to the right? I'm getting greedy now, yeah.
Yeah, it'll... You'll have to ask for variance on this setback.
Ain't worrying about it. I think we can do that. I just think you got two houses, you got a foot, three feet from one, 13, if you can make it wider. What do you got there against the right? Nothing, there's a big wall there.
This?
Yeah, it's a big giant wall.
Yeah, you have...
You mean, it goes up, it goes up like that? Big wall.
Yeah, you got about 10 feet between the house and the wall.
Right. So, I came over a couple of feet, give them a couple of feet from that house. And you still put the strip in there?
Kind of wrap it up with the applicant, and he's okay with it?
Just give them more room. You know, you got two houses down there, give them some more room. You know, maybe move that lot line another foot to the right even. I don't know, leave the same lot line, I don't care, as long as the house is far enough away from it. Just, I just... You're putting in a new house, and it seems too close, you know? The same south end, I don't want to pass sugar through windows. It shouldn't be like that in house that. So... Can you move that two feet? Yes. And put a variance on it for two feet? On the right side?
So, that means right side setback would be...
Left side, left side.
Left side setback would go down to 11?
Yeah, 11 feet.
11 feet.
Up to 11 feet, yeah. That gives them two, three, 2.3 feet. Just give them more, more space down there. I know what it's like, and there's a big mound there, that those people are going to have nothing much on the right side of that house, the left side of the house looking at it. So, I'm happy with that. Any other questions or comments?
I'm nervous about... Can you go back and talk about that new house? So, base elevation's what? I do have to come up, or you...
Base elevation's 12. So, if you see this red line?
Yeah.
That is the floodplain.
Okay.
So, the majority of the lots in it?
Yeah.
And we're actually cutting into it slightly, so we're increasing the amount of floodplain on the site. We're not filling.
Okay.
So, we're making it essentially better for the neighbors. We're not...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're not making...
So, then you're a base, and then you're 34 feet on top of that base?
So, we're... There's a garage under. It's at elevation 8.
Okay.
And then, the first floor will be at elevation 13.
Okay.
So, which is five over to the...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, you're at... So, you have three stories, and you have another story up that.
What's your half-story? You said two and a half in the application. Oh, it says three. So, that's my... That's my... I get it.
And just three stories, one's garage?
One's garage, yeah. And then, the second story is...
So, it's really three and a half?
The second story is a lot.
Yeah, second story is mostly dome. Okay, that's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just you have to call it three because of base elevation. That's right. That's what I thought, I was just making sure.
Yeah, it's a two and a half.
So, you said, you said originally, you said max elevation like 42. Is that correct?
That's the peak. So, that's 42 and a half minus 8, because your 8's, you're pretty much, you're grayed out.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, so that's where your 34 comes in?
Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure, I was... Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Jim? Have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, do we have anything from the...
Nope.
ZBA 22-23, James Burke, for a special permit floodplain variance to subdivide into two lots, construct a single-family home on the newly created lot on the premise number 25 Shannon Street, subject to...
Move it two feet?
Left elevation, left side back, move to 11 feet?
Yes.
And rebuilding the rear retaining wall?
Yes, rear retaining wall, and the cul-de-sacs he's going to put in, and you're going to put a wall up there, he said, and he's going to do all that. That's all in there.
Make a motion to approve the special permit floodplain and variance.
On the motion, CNN all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 401. He can help. I give her a... I just don't think I should go there. That's a political move. Your friends.
I was... I was all about...
ZBA 20260, Brian... No, we're just...
No, no, we're next.
We're at new business. ZBA 20238. Help me with this, Mr. Chin. Guoan Chen?
Shu Guom Chen.
For variance to enclose the existing porch and add windows, and the premise number 136, 138 Elmwood Ave. Epstein, there she is.
How are you?
Hi, good evening.
Name and address for the...
My name's Lillian. I'm behalf of my dad, the house owner, for 136, 138 Elmwood Ave.
And your last name?
Sure, XUE.
Okay. And your address?
My address is 138 Elmwood Avenue.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Go for it.
We tried to enclose our existing porch, and the address at the window to it right now, because it's opening on the first floor, open porch, on the second floor, which we live on, 130 Elmwood Avenue. It's very, very cold. And then, even the thermostat, we set it like 68, was 70 in the winter time, it always like run 10 degrees lower than the thermostat, and then just continued to heating. And then, our... The heating bill, gas bill, it's average higher than our neighbors, at least like 150 more every month. And then, just on the one-floor single unit, we're talking about like high 500, close to 600. And then, we also experienced a couple of times of the pipe, the water pipe rupture, because we're using the water heating system on the house. And then, it's winter time, a lot of times, it's starting down on daytime.
It's nice and...
Christmas Eve, and then, we couldn't find anyone to fix the pipe. And the water just like flood, like, we have like, talking about four, five inches high water from the water pipe. And then, it's very cold, and then, and then, just my dad... It's very cold. I live in that room for 20 years. Like, we bought the house on 2001. Since then, I live in the same bedroom, and it's like winter night.
You've got to fix that pipe.
And then, the room next to my bedroom, it's like water coming in, and it's going to stop.
So, you're insulating the porch?
Insulate the porch.
Adding heat?
No. No.
No, no heat, just insulating?
Just insulation.
And then windows?
And the windows.
And, okay.
That's it.
Any, any, any other new electricity or anything out there?
No, 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 just-
You're just gonna have the three-season porch, correct?
Yeah, just with insulation.
But it's gonna be insulation.
No heating, uh, no electricity, nothing, just to enclose it to prevent the water.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak in favor? First call, second call. No one? Third call closed. Correspondents, letter here by DPW, review the submitted above reference project and have no comments. Is anyone opposed or undecided? First call, second call. Third call closed. Yeah, I mean, she's had floods there and everything, so I'll be voting in favor.
In favor?
In favor.
Could I have a motion, please?
Sure. ZB A 2238, Shi Guan Chen, for variance to enclose the existing porch and add windows on the premise number 136, 138 Elmwood Avenue, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
On the motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, so moved. All set. Thank you. Further into tonight's agenda, ZB A 2267, Jessica Morales, for a special permit to operate a large family daycare on the second floor of the premises number 44 Pearl Street in Quincy. It's applicant or representative here. Hello, you have the floor. Name and address for the record, please.
Jessica Morales, my address is 44 Pearl Street, Quincy, Mass, second floor.
Okay. Now, your husband owns the first floor, runs the daycare on the first floor with six?
That is correct.
Does he have a license for 10?
Yes, yes.
He does?
He has license, correct.
For six or 10?
For six.
For six, okay. So it's a small daycare downstairs?
Correct.
And you want the one upstairs. And how long have you been, how long have you had that business?
We, I've been running that business for 17 years.
And no one's contacted you? Finally, someone did and said you need a license for stuff?
Correct.
From the city. Okay, I get it. Any questions?
Not this time.
No questions.
Thank you. You can have a seat. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Come, come forth. Name and address for the record.
You guys can all come up at once.
Yeah, you can all come up. Anyone that wants to speak in favor, come on up. We can just line up and go bing, 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 bing.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening.
I see the kids.
Yes.
There you go. They all looking healthy.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to come and speak.
Name and address, just for-
Oh, Maureen Chapman, 75 Monroe Road.
Thank you.
And I became a mom in September of 2013, and right afterwards, we started our care with Jessica, Ms. Jessica, and my son Errol, who's in the back. All three of my kids have gone through. And I just wanted to speak to the quality of care. It's been a real member of our family. And I also wanted to speak to Jessica's ability to address things with parents. If ever anything comes up, she's not just great with kids, she's also been really great at communication with adults and setting boundaries. If ever there's a time I'm staying too long or anything, and I have full confidence that if there ever were an issue in terms of the, the traffic on the street, she would be very capable of direct and supportive communication around it. So just in terms of that, you know, it's never been a challenge. Actually, I had a harder time at a center shortly after the pandemic, getting in and out. So it's been, it's been, in my experience, very positive, and just also wanted to speak in support of the need for childcare, and for women to be at work, and, and to support this woman. So I just wanted to come out and, and give that support, for all three of my children to be with me, because when I don't have childcare, they have to be with me. And if I don't have it, you know, it's hard to go out and do things. So, anyway, thanks for-
Thank you so much.
Thank you for hanging in tonight. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anna M. Warner, 202 Federal Ave. Same thing, I fostered a mother just a year ago. It's my little girl in the back there. So, my first time becoming a mother, first time going through finding daycare, extremely hard.
Yeah.
I remember joining the Quincy Mom and Facebook group, and someone saying, oh, you need to love months before you have the baby, even though she's not going to daycare till she's six months old. Even then, it took me a long time. I had to go to daycare in Milton, drive 30 minutes, then go to work in Boston, added an hour to my commute. It's really, really stressful. So my mom finally was able to get in, so I'm close nearby. Such a stressing importance of having these daycares. It's definitely very hard. And then since then, we've been extremely happy, very communicative, it's very much made my transition easy. Jessica and Louis have been wonderful. Addie's gone to Louis's now, but it's been very easy and seamless, and I think it's been very important having them nearby, making it easy for me to go to work, which has been very important.
Very good. Thank you for your time, Ma.
Hi, Sharon McDonald, 22 Hamilton Street in Braintree. I live in Braintree, but I do work in Quincy. I had heard about Jessica and Louis through multiple friends of mine who had already sent kids to the daycare and programs over the years, and they spoke very highly of them. So, they were number one on my list. I was praying I would get my little girl in there. I have a 15-month-old little lady. And when I went back to work last year, it just made it so much easier. They're brilliant. My little girl is happy going to daycare. She's happy coming home, and as a parent, you can't ask for much more. And like everybody else, I've seen the difficulties and the ridiculous long waiting lists of getting into daycare, so we just count ourselves blessed, because we are lucky enough to have people like Jessica and Louis, who don't see our kids. It's nervous, but it's like a second family to us, and we're blessed to have them.
Thank you very much.
So much support.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Aye.
Hi, I'm Teresa Shespansky. I live at 16 Blanchard Boulevard in Braintree, but my children go to, well, my youngest is now. So I have the mother of three. My oldest is seven. And not having family in the area, it was like really difficult to figure out where to put your children to stay working. And, actually, my colleague, Maureen, she's like, I send my children to Jessica and Louis. And I said, okay, this is a discerning adult who I trust, and if she says this is good enough for her kids, that's the number one thing that you can get from somebody. And I've not been disappointed once with that decision. Early on, my husband and I were, well, like Jessica's actually worked with a lot more kids than we have, so it's really nice having somebody else looking after our little girl every once in a while, and having, like, an experienced member of the village actually help raise my child and help me become a better parent.
Right.
They've always communicated directly with us. As our kids have aged up to a different center, there was separate paperwork. It was very clear to me that these were two separate businesses run under individuals, but the quality was the same. I never had an issue with arriving or parking, with picking up my children. Never, you know, even had to fi, worry about finding a space that would be blocking a driveway of a neighbor. You know, like, there was always like a legal parking space that I can take at any time that I've had to pick up my children. And also, just again, wanted to speak to, it is the middle of the school year, you have a bunch of working mothers who have quality, affordable childcare that they have been able to count on for years. What a dramatic disservice to the community to take that away from any of them, especially the quality place for years. So, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else? Second call?
Wait a minute, what passion?
Third call. I got two letters here.
This is for strong support. She doesn't have an address.
No address, no. There's no address in this one either. Drops their family.
Both in support.
Yeah, both in support.
Unfortunately, we can't read stuff.
Jessica Zimmerman, five, five, oh, here it is.
She had an address.
From the bottom.
So long away. Yeah, yeah, perfect.
Perfect.
Jessica Zimmerman, 5 Moscow Street. Writing to Express and through the effort to support over the application. Although we're relatively new to the program, as you may know, she's been operating for nearly 20 years. I can say with the utmost confidence that Jessica's an outstanding, experienced provider who's exceeded our expectations in every way. My daughter's absolutely thriving in her care, and I cannot imagine bringing her anywhere else. Jessica's a true partner with families, maintains a safe, caring environment, delivers exceptional, family-oriented care. As an operator, Jessica is extremely diligent about following all the applicable rules and regulations. She's transparent about what she can or cannot accommodate with her no license. I have observed she maintains a positive relationship with her neighbors, goes above and beyond to minimize any potential impact of parking, ensuring timely drop-off and pickup. I toured close to a dozen family daycares prior to selecting Jessica's program. To put it plainly, hers serves as a model that others should follow. As I'm sure you're aware, there's a massive shortage of childcare providers in the region. Most programs have waited years-long, uh, most programs have year-long waitlists. I urge the board to grant the special permit, so we can continue the phenomenal care and support working families.
And this is the same thing, and it was, it was from, just so you know, Jessica King. Same letter, but she don't have an address, so I can't read it. And we'll call that part here and close. I'll, I'll be voting in favor. Someone had 17 years, we didn't even know about it.
All right. I just have a question. And Rob, maybe you can ask, answer this. I think this is the second one we've seen in like a month.
Yep.
Did we do like a new, like outreach, or is that what it was?
No, I just thought that we were, we had to believe in licenses and that family.
Maybe, maybe, maybe someone, is that like on the website or something or anything? Does it say, to require licensing?
It's in the sort of coordinates, I think you need to watch the daycare.
All right. I was just wondering. So I'm in favor. I just wanted to know, like, I just wanted to find out if there was a bigger reason.
Yeah, that's what's going on, I thought, too.
Two weeks ago. Yeah, it was two weeks, yeah. No, it was four, because I wasn't here two weeks ago.
And she was there 16 years. She's been there 17 years.
Yeah.
So figure it out.
Yes.
It's no one's, they got their license in state, and that was it, not the city. All right. Anyone else? Questions? Have a motion, please.
Sure. ZB A 2267, Jessica Morales, for a special permit to operate a large family daycare on the second floor of the premise number 44 Pearl Street, Quincy, and make a motion to grant the variance.
On the motion? CNN, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, posed, so moved. ZB A, where am I now, 20-
Sorry for the challenges. Government.
Hey, hey, I still like your toys.
I got a store.
Yeah, maybe, there you go.
Thank you, guys. Thank you for your patience.
ZB A 2270, JBC Architect, for variance, special permit flood plain finding. Add one and a half-story rear addition to the existing one-story single-family home, and increase the parking spaces to three on the premise 62 Nightingale. Name and address, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Jim Chen, Architect. I'm representing Mr. Wong's, who cannot be here tonight. But, so this property is located in a rez B zoning district with about 10,161 square feet of lot area. It's currently a single-story home, one of the smaller homes in the neighborhood, with about 1,000 square feet of living space.
Yep.
So the, the family is wanting to expand another unit in the back of the property. It's about 30 feet by 37 feet space, two, two and a half-
30 by 37?
30 by 37.
30 feet long by 37 wide?
30 feet wide by 37 feet long.
An addition to that house?
Yes. At, at the back of the property. It'll be two and a half stories with no basement. So, in the, the gross area for the, for that space will be 2,280 square feet with additional three bedrooms and two baths. The, the project complies with all the dimensional requirements on the proposed addition, whereas the existing structure is a non-conforming structure. So the applicant is seeking variance on the number of parking.
Yep.
Existing has two, with proposing have three parkings, with five parkings required. Appken is also seeking a finding for the existing non-conforming front yard and the side yard setback, and the existing lot width. And it will also require a special permit for the, because it's in the flood plain zoning district.
I have a lot of questions, but the one that really gets me, I don't mind an addition on the back of the house. Did I read somewhere it was about family members coming to stay?
Yes.
All right. That don't matter, so. But I understand. And if they wanted that, I wouldn't mind an addition. Personally, I would never turn that into a two-family the way it's set up, that lot. There's just no parking. There's no parking. You got one straight shot. How do you have a two-family with stacked parking? Never work. Just don't work. So, if, if you want an addition on the house, I'd say revise your plans, come back, and, and make it an addition on the house to make an addition that they want. But I would never turn that into a two-family myself with no parking like that. It's just, I was trying to see if we could get parking on the other side. We can't.
No, it's tough.
And I don't want to take away the front of the house, because that would look silly doing the front. So I just personally, I just could never do that. I don't know. What's your comments?
No, I mean, when I looked at it, I was like, same thing.
It's one parking.
And it's, it's a massive, I, I understand why they did it. It's probably cost structure, it's easier to do it that way. I, I, this is like the third or fourth one we've seen recently, where they're just trying to put, where it's just a massive house in the back of what is a, a smaller house. I'd rather see, personally, I'd rather see somebody, you know, if you're gonna, if you're looking for all these, I'd rather see it tear it down, like, and then rebuild, figure out the, the structure, where it is exactly, and then get parking in the back, and you'd have plenty of room for parking in the back.
That house is so small, it ain't, right. It ain't worth, it ain't worth much.
It's not worth much, you know?
The house itself, right. No offense, right.
Yeah. So that would be my comments, just without taking any testimony.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice big lot. You could knock that one down, push it back, and have plenty of parking.
Two parking both sides.
Hey, you could even have parking in front at that point.
Yeah.
You could park on both sides.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Even if they're stacked parking, they could park on both sides.
It barely attached to this house.
I know.
It's a breeze way.
It's another house. It's a house in a house.
Yeah.
House for the house.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with the comments. The lot is very deep, and it's, you know, 1,000 square feet, but just with the way that it's set up, the parking is very difficult for tandem and so forth. It's just hard to make-
Hard to make a two-family work, yeah, yeah.
All right, so I'll call it.
So, what do you want to do, the draw?
Can I continue for another two-
Two months?
Two months.
All right. Why don't we continue this to December?
There was a couple of comments. Do we want to take any comments?
Oh, jeez, yeah, yeah. If, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I don't want to say-
If anyone wants to make any comments-
Well, you guys-
Set, you would set, we set your piece?
Yeah. Name and address for the record.
Steve Mays, 51 Nightingale Ave.
Yeah.
You guys have seen it, right?
Yeah.
You've been there, yes. They share a driveway.
Yeah.
My concern was the, you know, the addition of parking where-
Parking. Where you gonna go? There's no way to do it.
I've been there for 38 years, so I, I-
It's a little single-family house, right.
Yeah, and they share a parking lot.
She had a parking lot, right.
Not only that, it's, you said it's gonna be 37, 30 feet back?
37 feet back and 30 feet wide.
Yeah, it goes down to a river.
Yeah, it's gonna be a giant, giant, giant. Right, but there's no place to park. I